Welcome to the Christian County Library Board of Trustees meeting. If anybody needs tonight's agenda, it is on that back table over there by the sink. And I will reiterate what Tori said. If you are speaking later in the public comments and you have something that you would like to be included and posted with the minutes from this meeting, please make sure she gets a copy of that. All right, we'll start with the consent agenda. I am going to remove the budget update, balance sheet, monthly report, all of that from and the bill, all the financial report, all of part two from the consent agenda because Mary had personal things going on and we do not have that yet. So that will be in the, what month are we, October? November, thank you, meeting. But is there anything else that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. All right, so is there a motion to remove the financial report from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
My second.
Okay. All right, and roll call vote. Trustee Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Sazinski?
Aye.
Okay, and then is there?
Allison, is that to remove and table it?
To remove and table, yes, until the November meeting. And then, so is there a motion to then approve the consent agenda without the financial report in it?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
All second.
All right, trustee Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan, or I mean Sazinski?
Aye.
Hagan's not here, thank you. All right, thank you, guys.
Sorry, I missed the first and second.
First?
Okay.
Second? Second, I don't remember who's.
Stephanie Echo, okay.
Stephanie, no, it was Diana.
I got Diana and Stephanie for the first.
For the first one, it was Echo for the second one.
Okay, the whole team's on board.
Yeah, everyone, you're good. Okay, administrative highlights.
Yes, I've asked Nicholas Holliday, our Director of Communications and Community Engagement, to give this Patron Insights update.
Hey there. Let's talk some numbers. So my name's Nicholas, I'm Director of Communications and Community Engagement. Like everybody else, we have a lot of hats. And so outreach is one of the departments that I oversee as well as communications. And so what we're going to talk about today is our Patron Insights. Broadly, Insights are these observations that we collect from data, and it's going to help us, you know, serve the community better. We collect data both formally and informally. We employ qualitative and quantitative methods to do that. Some data we collect as a requirement for the state that's usually put right here in the annual report each year. That's stuff like door counts, circulation, usage, program attendance, collection size. Other types of data, we employ our software, and it's called Savannah, and this is an example of it, and it's by Orange Boy, and we use that to calculate different metrics. We've been using Savannah since 2017, and it kind of collates a lot of different data sources, such as census and usage maps, targeted and emailing and fundraising. We use it for that stuff. All digital communications that we send out to the community is through Savannah that has an email and function. So let's just look at information based on location, day of the week, yearly trends, physical usage, stuff like that. Each quarter, metrics are packaged together and they give us like a snapshot. And we share that with administrative staff, but Renee wanted me to highlight a few of them for this past quarter, which is quarter two. So before we're gonna, there's a couple we're gonna look at: market penetration, new cardholder retention, gain-loss, NPS, and email open rates. That's the data up there. It's really small, but you also have something down, so you can look at that there. Okay, so market penetration. This measures the percentage of active households in a service area, and the larger the percentage, the broader the library's reach has. The formula is used by marketers, and a good market penetration for consumer products is about 10 to 20%. Ours, for this past quarter, is 29%, and it's considered in the good range. And it represents a growth of about 231 households from quarter one. However, being a library, we're not a, we're not selling a product, so it's best to kind of compare that number to other libraries. And that's what Savannah does for us. They'll compare it, you can see the different colors, but compare it to all libraries that use Savannah, libraries that are similar to us in population, size, and they'll compare it to libraries similar to us in budget. There's about 217 libraries that use Savannah, and roughly there's about 75 libraries that are comparable to our library in budget, and another 75 comparable in category, or categorical size. So as you can see, for our market penetration, we're doing better than all libraries that use Savannah, and better than libraries that have a similar budget size than us, and pretty much on par for libraries that are about the same size as us, which is about under 100,000. The next measure will be new cardholder retention. This measures the success rate of keeping new cardholders active. While all libraries do see a dip after one year of a cardholder, as far as inactivity goes, but similar to market penetration, the higher the percentage number, the better our retention rate. And for quarter two, we saw a 2% increase from quarter one, 52%, and we're at 54%.
Can I ask a question? How is that measured? Is that, just checking, checking?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. Your next handout there has the formulas right there in front of you.
Perfect, thanks.
So 54% for new cardholder retention. Inactivity happens if a cardholder does not use their card after one year. Does that formula help?
Yes, I, so basically what I'm, what I'm thinking is like if somebody were to come to an event, that wouldn't count because we're not selling that card.
Awesome, awesome question. So this is really only circulation activity.
Circulation, okay.
So if somebody comes in, gets a card, comes in and uses the computers, that doesn't count as circulation activity. If they come to an event, that doesn't count as circulation activity. So for all intents and purposes, these numbers are under-reported because we're just using numbers that Savannah tracks, which is usage of materials. It's a great question. All right, gain-loss. Gain-loss measures if we're gaining more active users than we are losing to inactivity. And it is a helpful metric, but it also closely reflects changes in library services, the bottom one, right there, good. It really is affected by change in library services and just general usage. So for example, during COVID, our gain-loss was pretty low because the library wasn't open. And then when we opened a new branch, as you can see in quarter two of 2021, that's when Clever opened, so our gain-loss was pretty high, as in we had a 209% gain. On the whole, though, we're looking for a positive number. That means that we are gaining more active patrons than went inactive. And if there is a quarter loss, like I said, it's not that alarming. It happens. We had it a couple times throughout 2020 and 2021 due to, you know, the library being closed. But our gain-loss for quarter two was 37%, so being in the positive means we gained more than we lost for inactivity, and we were higher than all libraries in Savannah and libraries that are similar size and similar budget category. Okay. The next one is NPS. NPS is another metric that we use, it's not up there, that's Tori. Another metric that we use to help us understand how patrons feel about the library services. It's called a net promoter score. It's a short survey that we sent, that we asked, on a Likert scale of zero to 10, how likely they are, they are to recommend the library to others. We send this email each week randomized to every library cardholder that has an email address. So the more promoters, for the people that actively encourage library use, the higher our score. In the marketing industry, a high, excuse me, a great NPS is somewhere between 30 and 70, and an excellent score is over 70. For October 2021 through 2022, our score was 82, and for this year, 2022 to 2023, it increased to an 84, meaning that there are lots of library promoters that encourage library use to others. The last one is open rates. And we have different, we have several different types of emails we send to patrons, from the monthly upcoming events and news, to welcome emails for new cardholders. And we send out card renewals. We send that out three times. You get it a month before your card expires, and then two weeks, and then a week. So those are all the types of emails we send out. And according to email marketing benchmarks, an average open rate is somewhere between 15 to 20% on a whole. So if you get those, like emails from Gap or, you know, whatever other retail stores, roughly about 15 to 20% is about the open rate for that. But they do change based on the, on the industry. Nonprofits, it runs about 26 to 27%. So if you get that email from the Wildlife Foundation or something, that's a little higher. Education emails is about 28%, so that's like from schools. And then government emails are about 19%. For this year, just 2023, our monthly emails' open rate was right around 42%. So almost half of the people that we send emails to open them up and take a look at it. The renewal email rates, though, they hover around 51%. So when you get that email that says your card's getting ready to expire, those get opened a little bit more than the monthly ones that we send out. Okay, so what does all that mean? So data just tells a story. The numbers up there, they represent library staff. They represent circulation that we have. They represent our budget. They represent interactions. They represent efforts that we put on, our services, our programs, and our community partnerships. And when, even though I pull and review these, these metrics, they're not a byproduct of just what I do, or even the communications department, it's a, it's a result of everybody's work at the library. It's all of our library staffers fulfilling the library's mission to build community through, for all, through access, innovation, and engagement. And that shows what we're doing. Okay, question?
You may have said this, and I apologize if you did. How many emails for the NPS score about how many are going out? Like what percentage of cardholders are getting them?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. So NPS is gonna, it starts out, it starts to shrink because it won't send an email again to the same email address, okay? So in the very, last year, we would have more emails been sent out each week, and now they're kind of going down. But on the whole, so far, we've sent about 800 emails from the past years. Any other questions or clarification I can give? So that for, great.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Nicholas. All right, old business, parent resources.
Yes, I wanted to give an update on a work in progress that was prompted by a question I had from Allison. We're working on a dedicated webpage for collection resources, especially for parents, but really for all patrons to help navigate our collection. We're hoping to have that done next quarter, kind of depends upon a few things, and so it's in development. And the page will contain information about our collection, links to book lists, library resources that, I've talked about some before, some of our databases like Novelist and Book Connections, as well as third-party resources. And then also some tips for parents, and this is the thing that Allison had asked about, if a parent, when they get a card for their child, if they can put a message, ask us to put a message on their account saying, to require the parent to be present in order for the child to check out materials, which is something we can accommodate and do now, but it may not be something that people are aware of. So we'll make sure that that's included on this website as a tip for parents. And then part of this project will also be to have a handout that when people sign up for cards or at any time at the desk, staff will be able to give that out to patrons and make sure that they are aware of all of those resources and ways that they can navigate their account or their child's accounts.
Appreciate that update. Are there any questions about that, from anyone?
I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. New business, December board meeting schedule. So I have a conflict with the December board meeting date, which right now is scheduled, I believe, for the 19th. And so wanted to get the board to see if we could move that either a week early is, would be my hope. We could even do it another day of the week if that works, and I don't remember, Renee, we had talked about potentially doing it on Monday, maybe? Monday, the 18th of December? But my son has a choir performance on the 19th, so I apologize. They didn't check my schedule when they booked. So I don't know if the 18th works for.
It's okay with me.
I won't know tonight, I am pending work travel, so.
Okay.
I can let you know since I know.
Is there a date that?
I don't, I don't know if it'll be the week of the 4th or the week of, or the week of the 18th.
Okay, okay.
What about the 12th?
Should work, but I just don't know until later.
I have a board meeting for work on the 12th, so I won't be able to be there.
Right now, so 12th is a no-go.
Yeah.
12th is a no-go. So we're looking at the 18th, and then when?
Um, I mean, we could look at the 11th, if that's a better date for people. I know December is hard, just in general. I can also, the 20th, I know you're, a week is a week for you, so.
20th would not work for me. So far, it looks like the 11th or 18th. I have a message really quick to find out when my son's performance is. But right now, the 11th or 18th works for me.
Okay, so we can, can we figure this out via, is that something we can figure out via email?
Yeah, we can set it tentatively, and then we can.
Well, tentatively set it for the 18th, and then Stephanie and Echo, once you guys have your schedules figured out, then we'll formally, and we will change it online for the public, so everybody knows as soon as that is figured out. So I appreciate you guys being flexible. I know December is a hard month.
Yeah, the 19th would have been difficult for me, too, since we thought we were discussing this.
Okay, good, good. Okay, next on the agenda is the draft 2024 budget.
Yes, so, and this is not as, it's a little looser than I would have had it if Mary and I had had a chance to work through a few things the last few days. So I put projections on here, which I do every year. Those are, those are my projections and not the director of finance's projections, so take those with a grain of salt, although I don't think they're wildly off. I did some actual math and, and looked at what we've done in the past, so I think they're close, but probably not as close as Mary would, would get. So the goal of, of this really is to kind of give you the structure for what I'm looking at, and that I'll bring as the formal budget proposal next month. My focus for the 2024 budget, unless you would like to give different direction, is to sort of reset so that the budget is, I'm budgeting only the revenue that we bring in, in '24. And just historically, and we talked about this a little bit last year when we did the budget, several years ago, when the library was working on expansion and everything, they were, the library was saving money back to have in reserve in order to be able to do the expansions and stuff. So the last couple of years, we have used some of that money in addition to our revenue to be able to do all of the expansions. So when I started in 2021, looking at the numbers, we knew we needed pretty quickly to get that reined in and focused on just doing revenue. So I believe 2024 will be, will be able to do that. But that means it's, the budget is going to be actually pretty similar to what this year's budget is, is nothing really wildly different. So I'll walk through the, the current year, the carryover in bond reimbursement, just a reminder about what that money is for the, we have a certificate of participation for the Ozark and NIXA renovations, which is a way to finance things. That is a, that was a 10-year financing that we're paying off annually, and then the Sparta and Clever certificate of participation from 2020. The, that 2020 COP, we didn't spend about $1 million of what we borrowed essentially. So that money has been, that's that bond reimbursement that we're using to fund the NIXA financing for the lease purchase. And that carries us through, that remaining money makes the payments for like four, four to five years. So by year six, we will have, need to use operating budget to pay off that lease purchase from NIXA. So not only like this year, we're operating within, or for 2024, we're operating within revenue, but we need to start kind of thinking about each year, setting like a little bit back, or absolutely not touching what is still in reserve. And we still have over half a million in reserve that are in CDs and a couple of other accounts. So 2028 is sort of like that, that we're making sure we're planning for that four- to five-year mark. And this budget for 2024 will kind of get us on the, the right path for that, to be able to fund what we do every year, as well as planning for the future a little bit. And that, the 2018 COP for Ozark-NIXA renovations will be paid off the same year as the NIXA purchase, so that will free up about a half a billion dollars of.
All three will be at this?
The two.
Two.
The NIXA-Ozark, one is one.
One, okay, okay. The all of those will be?
Yep, the 2020 COP, we have, it was a 20-year financing, so that one will still be around for a while, a little bit. But that will pay off those two, the 2020, or 2018 and the 2022, sorry, lots of 20s. For, so for the 2024, what I've budgeted, the $350,000 is really just what's in that unused funds from the 2020 COP, as well as a little bit from the sale of the Fremont property back in 2021. That was like, we did that right after I started, so it's a little bit of a blur. That money was intended to be designated for the NIXA purchase, so that's the only thing we're using from kind of reserves. And then our estimated tax revenue is up a little bit. And then I have reduced kind of what we plan to bring in from fines and copier fees. This is kind of one of those things we've talked about before, like maybe looking at some reduction in fines or that process, and maybe phasing out some of those, like maybe looking this, next year at maybe children's materials being fine-free or some, something like that. And it's, that's a process and some conversations, but that's why I've budgeted, planned on budgeting a little bit less for that. State aid, I've budgeted conservatively because we're never sure what we'll get from that, because the state runs on a different fiscal year than we do. We get, like what's been passed now, we get in a fall payment and a spring payment. So I know we'll get that spring payment, but I don't know what we'll get next fall. So that $65,000 is approximately what the spring payment will be. So that could be higher. And then similar estimation for grants and donations, and that's state library grants, that's Friends of the Library grants, that's foundation grants, or other entities that we get grants from. And then I believe we're projected to get more than we budgeted for interest on our CDs this year, so I budgeted just a tick higher for that for next year. So for our expenditures for next year, I don't have anything planned for capital projects. This year, what we spent was to redo the parking lot here and the railing down the stairs that needed to be replaced. So mostly capital expenses would be something that would be over $30,000 mark. I am looking at potentially the NIXA parking lot, doing a resealing and restriping there, but I don't think that's going to hit anywhere near the $30,000. I could be wrong, but we did get an estimate about a year ago, and it was like $12,000 to $15,000, so hopefully it won't have increased exponentially in that time, so.
Are the vehicles captured under capital as well?
Only if we buy a vehicle, yeah, but like a repair, like we had to replace the transmission.
There were a lot of repairs.
Fortunately, it didn't hit the $30,000 mark, but that just falls under our, we have the vehicle category. And then like the parking lot, if it's $15,000, that would be in buildings and grounds.
So we're not planning on buying any vehicles?
No. Let's all knock on wood and say prayers. Personnel, kind of pretty much the same. We've done some rearranging, and I'll talk through, I'm still working on, that does include some pay raises, cost of living increases, and a couple of position adjustments. So that one, I'm still working through a few things on that, so that number is definitely going to change a little bit, but not wildly. Collection, I think we need to bump up a little bit primarily for our digital usage. We're continuing to see extreme growth in our usage of digital materials, while our use of physical material stays quite about the same. So I think we need to try to beef that up a little bit without going too crazy in spending there. And then the operating expenses is pretty much going to be about the same. So I think overall, the individual categories of the operating budget, oh, will be there next month. I don't think there's going to be more than like a 5 to maybe 10% variance of this year in what I'm proposing next year for any one category within the operating budget. So I think the areas that probably, like we spend the most on and then are kind of unknowns are the, the buildings and grounds, especially with now that we own all four branches. The, the roof here, we did just spend a few hundred dollars to repair, patch a few things. I'm hoping it will hold out for a while. I mean, it's a metal roof, so there's a lot of patching that can be done, but probably in the next, you know, three to five years, I'm guessing we're going to need to have some capital outlay for that, but hopefully not right away. NIXA's roof is in pretty good shape, just needs some ongoing maintenance. The HVAC, you know it, NIXA is original to the building, it's, everything's running right now. We've had a few repairs, but I don't expect, again, hopefully that will have like failure of all 16 units at one time.
It had some hail damage, too, correct?
No.
Oh, it did not, okay.
No.
And with the collections increase for potential digital, what does that entail? Is it accessing maybe new catalogs or new programs that we don't currently have, or expanding ones that we're?
It would be likely adding more materials or more copies of materials to Libby Overdrive and Missouri Libraries to Go. We, I mentioned in my report last month that we instituted a monthly spending cap at Hoopla that we, we hit probably 10 to 15 days out of each of the last two months. We've hit that daily spending cap, patrons are hitting that. So it's one of those things, like people will use as much of that as we have, so we have to have some, some limits on it, but we may like increase it a little bit. But that's probably where more into existing. We always keep an eye out for more products out there and more sources, but also we don't want to have like 10 different platforms that people have to learn to use or that we have to, you know, train staff on. So, yeah, it's really focusing on beefing up what we already have.
Any other questions? All right, 2024 interim director and understudy appointments.
And this is, again, like this is notification. Our policy is set up, since we don't have an assistant or associate director, we have this policy that was set in place before I came, that basically, you know, if I get hit by a bus or something, or have to be, you know, or if I decide to take, you know, a European.
You win the lottery.
Yeah, yeah. Or go backpacking through Europe for three weeks or something, like not, it's not for like a week vacation, it's for, you know, I'm incapacitated and can't do the regular business. So for 2023, Tori's been serving as the interim, and Dana Roberts, the Director of Youth Services, has been serving as the understudy for 2024. I want to flip that, and Dana will be serving as the interim and Tori as the understudy. And they've both done both of those roles for a couple of years. So, and Dana actually served as the interim, was activated for that when the previous director left, so she has some experience and navigated a lot and did a very great job. Tori also does a great job when called upon, but hopefully nothing terrible will happen to me.
Okay.
So that is that.
All right. We are going to move into public comments. As per the board's updated public comment policy, as a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarifying questions, comment or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. And like I said last month, I appreciate you guys being as respectful as you were last month. It helps to make sure that we have time for everyone to be able to speak and get through this without heightened emotions from anybody. I just want to make sure that everyone has the same respect given to them. So start rolling through, David Rice.
All right, my name is David Rice. I am speaking for Mary. The board needs to know about an incident that occurred after Mary suggested two books for purchase. Mary discovered a new book publishing company, Heroes of Liberty. Their motto is American values, one story at a time. The books teach children valuable lessons, connect them to their American heritage and the founding principles of our congregation. When Mary saw they published two books in this series about Thomas Sowell and Justice Clarence Thomas, two men Mary greatly admires, Mary jumped at the chance to request these books for our library. Mary checked that the CCL didn't already own these books and checked Mobius. These books were not available in any library, so Mary went ahead and requested them. Mary received an email that Clarence Thomas, A Justice for All by Larry Elder, would not be purchased because it was not available through the library vendors. Mary responded to the email and asked for reconsideration. Mary pointed out the library has at least six, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, you just, all right.
No.
Had at least six children's books about the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, nine children's books on Justice Sonia Sotomayor and none about Justice Clarence Thomas. Clarence Thomas's life story is one all children should know. His childhood is difficult and he overcame great adversity to earn coveted spot on a nation's Supreme Court. However, the individual from the collections department ignored Mary's request and provided her with a new reason for not purchasing the book. The Heroes of Liberty Publishing House is new to the market and unvetted, making it untrustworthy. At this point, Mary noticed that the Thomas Sowell biography purchased by the CCL was listed in an online adult catalog as adult nonfiction. However, this is a book written for children's ages seven to 12 and the CCL standards, the book should have been listed in the children's nonfiction section. These two incidents don't strike her as a coincidence. The library's stance on embracing intellectual freedom became clear to Mary. Diversity of view only matters when discussing gender ideology, but not when highlighting the intellectual achievements of people of color. Concerned, Mary responded to this message and copied Renee and pointed out these realizations. Renee responded to her email. Their misplacement in the Sowell book was due to a clerical error and she would provide access to the Thomas book through interlibrary loan in the future. The library would consider adding books about Clarence Thomas should there be any demand. Apparently it's okay for other libraries to have Clarence Thomas, but not at CCL. This library doesn't want children to read about people of color who do not see themselves as victims. Instead, they have filled the shelves with discredited anti-racist views that expose children to critical race theory. This is an example of the bigotry of low expectations which supports the idea that there is no variety of thought among people of color. This is false and has no place in Christian County. It's been over a week now and Mary hasn't yet to receive a response from the library by Clarence Thomas, A Justice for All, as we kept off our shelves. Is it because he is black or is it because he is conservative or both?
Thank you, Alfred Bog.
I noticed a lot of heads turned because they want me to spread. Okay, I'm Fred Bogey, Alfred was my given name. And I want to speak for three minutes on the unfortunate changes in America. I'm unashamed of being a born again Christian believer in Jesus Christ and in the invalidity of the scriptures. I'm also a proud veteran. I've lived a long time, born in 1939, and I've seen a lot of changes in our nation. There was a time when it was not offensive to say, one nation under God. It was one, a time when you didn't have to be ashamed to stand for the American flag or to salute him. There was a time long ago that in rural America, school students loaded their rifles on their gun racks in the back of their pickups, drove to school. And when the bell rang at the end of the day, they went out to hunt deer, not to shoot the fellow students. Something's changed. There was a time not long ago when marriage was considered to be sacred. There was a law, it was called to protect marriages, but it, it was known as alienation of affections. Most of our people don't even have any idea what that was. But it was to prevent adultery and the destruction of marriages. Today, it just seems like that's not sacred anymore. We've legalized abortion without pause, drugs without needs, gambling and a lot more. And it has not improved our nation. The news media wouldn't show the films that have Hamas soldiers plucking out the eyes of a man, cutting off a woman's breast, cutting her belly open, taking out the baby, decapitating that baby. They won't show that. Yet there is material that is shown to our children of the mutilation of the human body. It dehumanizes what life is all about. I think that many of the changes that we see in America, especially in our young people, young college students now protesting against Israel, you know, it's because we've opened up or made it possible for people to see things that they hadn't wanted to see. I believe that the human brain is a computer. What goes in stays in. No one, let alone children, should be exposed to books, magazines or photos of how the mutilation of the human body should be done just to justify the desires of some. I never thought that we would legalize same-sex marriages or impose the acceptance of this lifestyle on Christians who agree with the biblical condemnation of such lifestyle. There's not enough time to cover all that I have seen that's contributed to the present status of the children in our society. It's wrong to place anything in our public library that would have negative effects on our children's lives. Thank you.
Gretchen Garrity?
I'm here tonight to give the board a little outline on how the Marxists infiltrated our library catalog system and which has allowed our, our library to be infiltrated with all kinds of inappropriate books, such as the gentleman just mentioned. The communist infiltration of libraries began in earnest in the 1970s. The basis of the change is detailed in numerous books, academic papers and articles, some of which I included in your packet. The basis is that the classification and cataloging of, of the classical systems that were historically in place, like the Dewey Decimal System and the Library of Congress Catalog System, have been termed racist, homophobic, outdated, difficult and so on. Additionally, Melville Dewey, admittedly a man of his time, had has his character and work assassinated as a way of dropping the system, which is classic Marxist tactics. Although the, all through the information that I've provided, you're going to find revolutionary Marxist terms and phrases that advocate the overthrowing of the true library science systems in order to be able to provide wider access to LGBTQ plus, critical race theory and other revolutionary materials. The destruction of the nuclear family is also a stated goal. As a result of this library revolution, you'll find that today's libraries have become a mismatch of cataloging systems. In the children's sections in particular, cataloging has often been abandoned beyond simply categorizing books by author or title. This allows activist librarians to seed inappropriate books throughout the library. And it's why parents are finding inappropriate books all over the place as they browse the shelves for their small children. This is a law of unintended consequences. The graphic novel section has become a classification of its own instead of by the traditional cataloging of subject. It's not a surprise that graphic novels are now one of the main places where teens are introduced to gender ideology. I was recently on a Zoom call with the liberal group FAIR, which is the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism, in which a parent detailed that graphic novels had a major part in influencing her son to transition. This is not a liberal versus conservative topic. She said that she used to be in favor of her children reading anything at the library, but now she has to closely read every book before her children do. What a burden upon parents. I'm not sure how our library system categorizes and catalogs its books, except to say that horrible books can be found by children everywhere in the library. The ALA and the MLA are main drivers of this revolution and our library needs to remove the indoctrination from both the library shelves and the librarians.
Thank you. Mike Miller?
Hello, my name is Mike Miller. Our library has a mission statement which reads, building community for all through access, innovation and engagement. In an effort to work toward that mission, scores of people have come to these trustee meetings since March with an important issue on their minds, protecting children from obscene, erotic or pornographic content that is age inappropriate at our public library. To me, it seems that these parents are asking for one thing, making, I mean, moving or labeling books with obscene, erotic or pornographic content that is age inappropriate so that unsuspecting children and parents aren't blindsided by them. And here's a key point. You can meet your mission of having information available for all, including content that is obscene, erotic or pornographic, without having to shove it down the people's throats or place it willy nilly throughout the building. To date, little or no action has taken place regarding this issue and it's hard to imagine why. The reason given for this inaction parrots the American Library Association mission, which in part is ensuring access to information for all. This reply or excuse is a false flag or a red herring response. Libraries do not have every book published on their shelves and they never will. But they can and do provide access to thousands of books not on their shelves through an interactive library loan process. I urge our library team and its trustees to be independent minded, to act on behalf of the needs and desires of our community and its children, even if it involves some compromise. If the question arises as to which books need moving or labeling, there is an easy solution. Start with some of the titles that all these folks have brought to these meetings and do two things. Pull some from the stack and share them with your mother or your grandmother and ask if they are appropriate for children to view. And secondly, let the highway patrol officers who will soon operate in office on library property view the books. Then ask if they are appropriate for children to freely view. And you might even ask them if they'd like them sitting around in the, in the waiting room. I think these responses will help guide your decision-making. It's going to take courage, it's going to take independent thinking, it's going to take people who live up to their oath of office. And trustees, I urge you to take action. I urge you to put a motion on the table at the next trustee meeting so we know your intentions about this issue and we can find out if we can count on your support.
Thank you. Elena King?
I continue to be concerned by the lack of response to the sexual and age inappropriate material being purchased and placed in our library, age targeted to minors. My purpose in addressing you this evening is to bring you data that I hope will help you to see public opinion on this issue. Using publicly available data, I was able to search over 63% of Missouri's public library catalogs. I sampled 13 of some of the most well-known, well-known age inappropriate books that are marketed to children, most being sexually explicit in nature, and found that 60% of Missouri libraries shown in blue on this chart actually had zero of these books on their shelves. 25% shown in green only had one to four of the book searched. 7% in yellow had five to 10 and 8% in red had 11 to 13 of these books. I'm relieved to say that the majority of Missouri libraries, as you can see, it appears have managed to remain a safe neutral ground that reflects the community values. I am however regretful to report that Christian County fell into the highest percentage of age inappropriate material that I found in my search. So this leaves me with more questions than I began with about the process used to select books for minors in our library. Questions such as, why does the Christian County library resemble St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia and Springfield more than counties of similar size and demographic? Do the ALA and MLA, who have been active promoters of Marxist ideology, have more input on the direction of our library than the citizens of this county? And do we have political activists running our library? I truly hate to raise these questions. I do not know the heart of any board member or director in our library, but I can measure the outcomes of leadership, policies and partnerships that do not represent the majority of Christian County citizens. I strongly urge the board to consider market research to determine where Christian County citizens are on this subject and not with misleading questions like, do you support book burning? I mean, true market research that shows the community the state of our library. Show them excerpts, show them photos, have the community determine what our standards are and you will see who the majority really is. One indicator of public sentiment can be seen with election results that I handed you. Every town in Christian County has begun to challenge and replace school board members who did not support the removal of sexual books in the public school libraries over the last two years. While the laws and purpose of the public library and public school library are obviously different in many ways, your community has given you election results to show you how we feel about sexual content given to children in Christian County. We said no. For example, in NICSa in April of 2023, you can see that the individuals who held the strongest positions about keeping sexual content in the NICSa school libraries were only able to garner 9% and 15% of the votes in a pick three candidates race. And Ozark during that same election, the citizens selected three of the most openly Christian and conservative candidates on the ballot. I bring you this information not to rub salt in the wounds of those who think differently than myself, but to ask again for reasonable compromise. Jeremiah, Jeremiah 29:7 says, "But seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you into exile and pray to the Lord on its behalf for its welfare, you will find your welfare."
One Etta Bright?
Could we turn this light on? I'm having trouble, I was afraid, I sometimes have. Could we turn things so? My favorite book, John 8:31-32. "If you hold to my teachings, you are really my disciples; then you will know the truth and the truth will set you free." This is the truth. Exposure to pornography, a form of sexual trauma. This is the name and subject of an article written for the Journal of Psychiatry Reform, December 7th, 2021 by Carolyn Giraud. Ms. Giraud is an associate clinical professor and a psychiatrist at the University of California Davis Medical Center. After citing multiple examples in the beginning of this article of particular cases of young men, teens to early twenties, whom she had treated for displaying lewd, self-destructive or even criminal behavior among the general public, Ms. Giraud boiled the cause down to one common denominator in each case. Each of these young men had been exposed to pornographic material at a young age. She went on to say, exposing children to pornography should be forbidden and better regulated as it is violating their spiritual boundaries and evolving beliefs around body, sexual development and intimate relationships in a similar way that direct sexual abuse on their body does. If this trauma is not identified and processed promptly, the survivor runs the risk of reenacting as an attempt to resolve what once left him or her powerless or of even engaging in similar criminal behaviors. In plain language, that means that the victims who either see the porn at a young age or are abused themselves are at risk of becoming abusers. At one point in the article, Ms. Giraud questioned one of the young men, a 16-year-old who had tried to commit suicide and was totally obsessed and overwhelmed with masturbation to the point that it had taken over his life. When asked about exposure to porn, porn, he admitted that he had seen porn on a phone at six years old. When asked how he felt seeing the pictures, he was given the options of pleasure, disgust, et cetera. He answered, pleasure. His young mind simply couldn't process his feelings about the erotic images placed before him. This premature exposure to sexual information, he had wreaked havoc and created a porn and masturbation addiction that was driving him to want to end his life at 16. In a synopsis, Ms. Giraud states, "In summary, ex-" In a synopsis, Ms. Giroux states, "In summary, exposure to pornography is not trivial. It can have traumatic effects, leading to significant distress, disruptive behavior, compulsive sexuality, and even suicidal attempts. Until our society becomes more aware to the point of preventing this by regulating access of such materials more effectively, psychotherapy should be the main intervention to address the unresolved trauma. My friends and I are not book burners. Book banners were minority right-wingers. We simply ask that these graphic books be rated and placed in appropriate areas to protect unsuspecting families from unwittingly accessing them. We're patriots, Christians, moms, dads, grandmas, and grandpas, and even abuse survivors, doing all that we can to protect those kids and grandkids from what might have happened to us." And I already turned my paper in.
Jamie Reddick?
I'm Jamie Reddick. I'm the state representative for the one hundred and forty district here in Christian County. I'm glad to hear that I didn't hear it this month, but last month's Christian County Library Board meeting, there was a clear, it was clear that there was a new policy to be put in place. The policy was that any comments, outbursts, or applause that were given in support or against any of the public comments, the board president would abruptly end the meeting. When asked if this was a decision made by the board president alone, it was acknowledged that it was. This sort of unilateral decision-making has no place in our society and definitely not on this board. The idea that there was no vote or discussion is disheartening and very disturbing. Acknowledgement and applause is our way of showing our pleasure or displeasure of any idea or action. If the last thirty minutes of each month, if the last thirty minutes of each month's meeting is to merely speak to the air and have our words fall in deaf ears, that policy is actually perfect. However, if you're sitting in your chair and truly taking each and every person's words to heart, this policy is insulting to our First Amendment. Why a public comment if you're not going to hear what we had to say? The policy on record for the public comment portion of these meetings states that if at any time individuals or groups interrupt the meeting, exceed the time limitations, or violate the CCL's library code of conduct, they will be asked to cease to address the board and/or leave the meeting as deemed necessary by the chair. This policy does not indicate that you have the right to adjourn a meeting, and the policy does not indicate that applause has to be stifled. If you go this far, then applause during any portion of the meeting has to cease as well. No more applause for jobs well-done by the employees, community accomplishments, or new board appointees. I recommend that the board consider the current policy that was last updated in March of this year as it stands. If it needs to be updated, then do so by a vote of the entire board. If you choose to go down that road, I ask that the other four board members assist the president in defining what disruptive behavior is. Our First Amendment rights are counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.